Vice Chair Watson.
Present.
And Chairman Williams.
Here. Thank you. Item B will be the approval of the minutes of our July 16, 2018 regular meeting. Do I hear any additions, subtractions, corrections from anybody? If not, that's your vice chairman, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the minutes of the July 16, 2018 meeting.
All right. Do I get a second?
Second motion.
Okay. We have a...
One second.
Commissioner Norwood, second it. Jackie, would do a roll call vote, please.
Oh.
Yes, we're gonna have to do this with each vote. Beginning with this month, yes, we have to.
Okay, okay.
Roll call vote.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowell?
Yes.
Commissioner Norwood?
Yes.
Commissioner Dowling?
Yes, aye.
Commissioner Masters? Vice Chairman Watson?
Sure.
And Chairman Williams.
Yes. And as we carried, the next item is call to the public. This is where anybody in the public would like to address anything that's not on the agenda tonight. Do we see...I haven't got any cards. I don't see anybody that looks like they're gonna jump up to talk to us, so we'll pass on that. We have no old business, and we have two new items before us. The first one is PCU-14-003 MOD Main Stage. It's a request to extend the approval date for a restaurant in the C1 zoning district located at 1 South Main Street. Jim, are you doing that one for us, sir?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Chairman Williams. There's seven people here. As you said, this is a time extension request for technically Bee Stop Eatery, which is on the property there where Main Stage is currently located. They had a... They had a conditional use permit granted in 2014, and because it's in the C1 zone and there's a drive-through, it requires a conditional use permit. Since that time, there's been various food service type restaurants of different types at that location. The zoning is C1. The Main Stage business itself offers drinks, food, entertainment. And this Bee Stop Eatery is a complementary business to the Main Stage. It is a separate business, but they are complementary with each other. As I said, the existing detached building has been operated over the years, different restaurants. And what is proposed, the Bee Stop Eatery, is continuing that same food service type business. They share a parking lot owned by Main Stage, and there's adequate parking for both of these businesses at that location. We haven't received any comments for or against this. As you see, the site is located at the southeast corner of Main and Mingus, and the zoning is C1. This is currently what the building looks like. It has been recently repainted in this color. This is what is seen from the street, and also another street view. And this would be from the rear of the building as you're driving around the drive-through and exiting out on to Mingus. It's the business across the street. This is just to the east. That's the rear of the Main Stage business, looking east on Mingus, and looking west on Mingus. So the reason we, you know, brought this extension up before you is under most circumstances, once a business has not been there for six months, it loses its pre-existing non-use of the conditional use permit. There is a provision of the code if this is continuing with a similar type establishment that commission has the ability to extend that conditional use permit. So that's why we're here tonight, since there has been a gap longer than six months that the building has been vacant, and asking for that extension to be approved. We do have the applicant here this evening also, so if you have any questions, either of me or the applicant.
Well, Jim, I have one real quick. We're not talking about an extension, we're talking about a continuance, right, of the conditional use permit?
Correct.
It's a...it's...yeah, it's a permanent conditional use permit. But the reason we're doing this is because it's been vacant for six months, which means they need to come back and get it re...at least re-approved. But we're basically talking about reapproving the same use that was there before, just a different user.
That's correct. If we were looking at a different use, something that required a conditional use permit, we'd be back here for a different process.
All right, that's fine.
But because it's basically going from food service with the drive-through to this business, it's food service with the drive-through, it fell under that little provision that you can extend the approval, continue the conditional use permit.
Condition, okay. Commissioner Hart, anybody? Start with you. Any questions of Jim, just questions?
The only thing on Mr. Curtis' slide, could you go back to the very first page? It's food, drink, entertainment. Is there gonna be any entertainment?
That is just in the Main Stage, the larger business.
That's just for the stage, okay.
Correct.
All right.
Commissioner Dowell?
No, no questions.
Vice Chairman?
I have one question. Could you just point out, Jim, where the pickup window is for the drive-through? I kinda missed that.
So this is what you would see from...I'll go to another slide in just a minute. This is what you would see from Mingus, and the traffic enters over here, comes around this side, the other side of the building, and exits right there.
Where's the pickup window for the drive-through?
The pickup window is right there.
Okay. Got it.
So that's where they'll come through the parking lot, around the other side of the building, and then pick up their goodies there, and keep leaving.
Okay.
Commissioner Dowling?
No questions.
Any questions?
No questions.
Okay, Jim, the owner, representative of the agents here tonight? Yes, if I have your name, please?
Hello, I am Michaela Lavender, and I'm the CEO of Bee Stop Eatery. Nice to meet you all.
Can you tell us a little bit about what you're gonna be doing there?
I am going to be doing a clean cuisine, grab-and-go eatery. So I'm gonna have a very limited little menu with everything. As you walk in and pull up to the drive-through, it's hand...hand...hand ready to go and move along.
Okay. Okay. Any questions?
What is clean cuisine?
Clean cuisine is I am going to be making a lot of things myself, like I'm making my own mayo, things like that. I'm trying to bring in foods with less preservatives, and really trying to make a food that feeds your body and nourishes your body all day long. Good substance, just back to the original recipes of everything.
Okay.
I'm not gonna do vegan or vegetarian, but it's gonna be just homemade, good, clean food, so.
No pastries, or yes?
Oh, I'm going to be doing fruit pies. I'm gonna be having a rhubarb, a mixed berry, and an apple pie. So I'll be doing those. And then I'm looking at prospects throughout the town to bring in their pastries and have those displayed and those for sale. So it's not too much of a baker, I just love to make great food.
Okay.
Commissioner Dowell?
I have no questions.
Vice Chairman?
No questions.
Seems pretty clear.
Pretty clear?
I'm still kinda confused of what kind of food you're...is it sandwiches, or is it...
I'll be doing breakfast and lunch items, and I will have, like, instead of burrito, I'm gonna be doing little empanadas, and I will have sandwiches, chicken salad, soups, salads as well, so.
Oh, nice.
Yeah. I have a muesli pancake bites, stuff like that, so. All good little convenient on-the-go food.
Right.
Using the drive-in window, do I have to call you first, and you order by phone, or...
No, my drive-through will be, like, items that are gonna be listed for the drive-through menu will be all ready.
Just pull right there, and they're ready to go, sure.
Yep.
Okay.
So they can just drive up and let us know what they'd like, and hand it to them and cash out, and they'll be on their way, so.
Simple, right?
Going for consistency and efficiency.
There you go.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, I'm gonna close the...anybody from the public here to make a comment on this particular agenda item? I don't see anybody. I'm gonna close the floor to the public, and we'll start. Commissioner Hart, your thoughts, and...
Well, it's nice to see that another business is gonna try there. I don't see any objections, you know, in terms of use or anything like that, it seems. It's just continuing similar use.
Mm-hmm.
So no objections.
No, yeah. Just fine, like that?
No, I wish you luck. Good job.
Comments?
No comments, good luck to you.
Yes.
Seems as close as we may get to a slam dunk any time of the interview.
Maybe you'll...Commissioner Matt? Okay. With that, I don't have any other further questions. I think it's pretty straightforward. It's a daytime business, and shouldn't have a big impact on the neighborhood, I wouldn't think. Hopefully, it would be very busy, and you will. All right. With that, Vice Chairman, I entertain a motion.
I move that we approve PCU-14-003 MOD Time Extension Main Stage Bee Stop Eatery with the stipulations that the project is developed in conformance with the extension request submitted August 7, 2018. Two, any new lighting must meet dark sky requirements and ordinance requirements. Three, all signs shall be submitted and approved by a separate permit. Four, any modifications to the property structure will be...will need building permit and approval. Five, certificate of zoning compliance documenting the completion of conditions shall be issued by the timeframe specified.
I have a second.
A second motion.
Okay. Commissioner Norwood, second the vice chairman's motion. Jackie, will you do a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Hart?
Aye.
Commissioner Dowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Norwood?
Aye.
Commissioner Dowling?
Aye.
Commissioner Masters?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Watson?
Aye.
Chairman Williams?
Aye. Motion carries. Congratulations, good luck. All right. All right. Now on to our next item of new business, DR-18-001. And this is for a new mural on the city hall for the restroom signs. And we're looking for a design review approval of having the mural on the north side of the city hall building. All right, sir.
Thank you, Chairman Williams. As you mentioned, this is a design review application for a mural on the side of the city hall administration building just across the street from where we are now. We were approached by an artist who does mural work and painting signs. She had been approached by different city staff in order to put this mural up, which would have a depiction of a vineyard sort of going along with the cottonwood and the wine country theme. In addition to the artistic aspect of the mural, it's also to provide better signage for the public restroom facilities that are right in that location. There'll be a lot of questions coming into the city hall of where the restrooms are, so this will sort of help take care of that issue as well. After this, this will be going to Historic Preservation Commission, and then on to Town Council, City Council. Since it is a...on a city building, we will be getting there, request their approval for this. If you're looking from the Pima side of the building, which would be the north side, this is where the mural would be located. And this is a rough depiction of what the vineyard scenery would...would be. So the mural would be right in this location. As you can see, here's the men's restroom. So on this portion of the wall, right here, you would see a...back up a little bit. On this portion of the wall right here is where you would see a public restroom sign. So from Main Street, you would be looking at this to help you with your directional... This being on the other side of the building, in this location here, you would see the women's sign on the other side, the men, directing you to the correct room, the door here. Another little view, a little step back, a little bit farther across the street. So you would see the mural in this location. The men's sign would be right here, the women's sign back here, sort of behind this tree. And then looking more from Main Street, you would see the larger public restroom sign in that location. This is mural across the street, side of Red Rooster. So there's already, you know, some artistic application in that neighborhood. So with that, that's all I have to say, would be your input and recommendation for that point. We also do have both the...the artist is here who would be doing the painting, as well as Casey Rooney that she's been working with. Casey's the economic development director. So if you have any questions, either of myself, and then afterwards, they're both available.
Okay. Commissioner Hart?
I have no questions.
Question, no?
No questions.
I have a question. Had anybody suggested that that particular 72 square feet, or that particular area where all these new signs are gonna be relocated, suggest that perhaps there could be a directory, a business directory incorporated in that location, along with maybe the beautiful artwork, which I think is quite nice? But I also think that it's rather large, and that area could be used for some additional information for Old Town in particular, to perhaps designate other businesses that are, you know, in the community, like a directory, and not have such a large mural and precedent sending one, which we have in town already in a number of different places.
That hasn't been a part of this discussion for the mural. However, we are having discussions and moving forward with wayfinding signs, which is more of a directional, citywide, not just in this location. But that could possibly something that could be incorporated into this. Yeah, once the sign is painted on there, you lose that wall for any additional. But there are other locations right here, very visible and accessible, that there could be, that would be a good location for something like that. But that has not been a part of this discussion on...
Why would you suggest that maybe they slow down a little bit and look into a combination use? And there's nothing wrong with having some artwork, but I think it's a pretty large area, and we're beginning to have some creeping artwork in town.
I'll talk to Casey about that.
Pardon me?
Maybe Mr. Rooney can give us some more input to that.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Dowell?
It seems pretty straightforward. I don't really...it seems to blend well with the other...I'm just...I like having a discussion about something related to wine that doesn't include a room full of people yelling at me. Back in the council, that was so fun. But yeah, I appreciate it. I think it's gonna work pretty well.
Any questions? Okay. Commissioner Matt, any questions?
No questions.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. Mr. Rooney? Mr. Rooney? If you'll identify yourself, please, for the record.
My name is Mr. Rooney, Casey Rooney. I'm the economic development director for the city. I want to thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. And the artist is Marilyn. Marilyn, come on up.
Come on up.
Join me, if you don't mind. I appreciate your concerns about the sign.
Hi, everybody.
Marilyn has done other artwork. She did the artwork on the Old Town Jail. I think it's very tasteful. We're not trying to, you know, inundate Old Town with art. Not that it's a bad...or it's a bad thing, but she did a very good job down at the Old Town Jail. And the spot across the street, right over on the restaurant side of the wall, it's starting to not look so good. And even, go back to the one you just...one right before that. This was looking really ratty, too, just up until a couple weeks ago. And we painted the outside of it so we could prep the building, so we could put her artwork on the side of the building. Since I've been down here for 11, 12 years, I can't tell you how many times people will come looking for a restroom and can't find it. And then they go down to the Old Town Jail and drive the lady that runs that crazy. She gets a lot of people thinking that's a public restroom down there. This is the public restroom for Old Town. You probably do need a public restaurant...restroom down at that end of the street. But what I've noticed over my 11, 12 years of being here, people go looking for the restroom and they can't find it. So I went to city manager Bartosz, and I said, hey, Doug, what would you think about...I don't wanna overdo murals in Old Town, but what about something tasteful inside of that building across the street? So when people are coming up the street, they look over and they can tell where the restroom is without asking a million people where the restroom is. So that's kind of the point of what I asked Marilyn to do, do something very tasteful, wine-related, so the tourists, when they're walking around looking for a restroom, they don't have to ask anybody, they just kind of see it. And so it is, you know, again, I don't wanna overdo the artwork, but there could be a lot worse things to do in Old Town. And Marilyn did a great job with the Old Town Jail, and I would expect nothing but a great job with the restrooms.
Thank you, Casey.
Did you wanna say anything?
Would you introduce your full name, but Marilyn?
Yes. My name is Marilyn Brown, and I live over in Cherry. And I do a lot of work over here, signs, and I do a lot of holiday windows for businesses and different things. I've done a lot of mural work. I've been doing mural work and finishing and artwork since '99 full-time. I've been published for my murals. When Casey approached me, the town was really revamping the image for the public. And he had asked me to do something related to wine country, and it was my idea to put the city logo in there because it's important. It's important for your images of town, for what you're trying to draw people in for business, and it helps everybody here. I agree with you on signage. Honestly, the only signage I've seen is down by the old jail. There's a community sign that has different businesses and locations listed, which is really good. But if you're putting it around on the site where the mural would be, I don't think you're gonna get people... they're not gonna see it unless they're going to the bathroom. Then they're gonna be thinking about making it to the bathroom, not looking for where the businesses are. That's just my take on it. I put a little detail in the drawing. It would be very detailed and very nice. It's...I don't do just slap it on there type work. I never have. I want my name to be on it and be proud that I did it. I've noticed all the murals around town also, and a lot of them are in very bad disrepair. They need to be touched up or redone to make them where they don't look like eyesores. Because, I mean, your community put them up, people that live here and that have community pride. And that was what my next step was, was to talk to these people that own the buildings and see if they would like to have the murals updated and brought back where they look good. Because right now, they're flaking, they're fading, and they're not good for anybody. But do you guys have questions before I...
Right. Any questions, Marilyn? I would have a question of Casey falling...
I'd like to make one more comment. I'd like Mr...is it Mr. Norwood?
Yes.
I'd like...I like your suggestion of tasteful signage. And what I was thinking as you were speaking was down in by the Old Town Jail, we put up that stone kiosk. I think it's really nice.
That's what I was talking about.
And there's beautiful signage in there. But that's all the way down there, and that's where all those people are looking for the restrooms and... I wonder if maybe another different project done very tastefully would be in front of Business Assistance Center or in front of City Hall, that stone line over there. There might be another kiosk that is what you're looking for.
Well, let me restate. The mural, the artwork is one thing, and I'm...I'm an art collector myself. I have a huge collection of Native American artwork. It's not...it's not...it's not that. It's the use of that particular space that could be utilized in a way that would serve the community in a greater way than a 72-square-foot mural. What I'm suggesting is that if you look at that space, you could cut that in half and have maybe a much smaller mural, and then have some additional Old Town or cottonwood information at that location, rather than having a huge eight- or nine-foot tall mural, which is there. And I think the applicant has also stated some of the burning issues with murals in town. And they don't look good after a few years. We live in the desert. The sun hits them, the weather hits them, and there's a problem.
May I approach you, sir?
Sure.
May I come out? Let me show you. This is a little more detailed than what was on the screen. And what I did was I put the city logo at eye level. The street drops drastically from there, about at far. And what I did is I put the logo at eye level, where when somebody's driving by, they will see it, but it won't look out of proportion when somebody walks up also. If you cut the mural size down, you're gonna lose the scale of it. It's gonna look like tacked on, basically. That, that's the only thing.
Well, you know, if you want...
Marilyn, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I apologize.
It's okay.
Yeah, I need you to be in a microphone. You can go back, I'm sorry. We're recording this, yes. My fault, my bad. I'm fine. We can just pass this around and back, and then...yeah.
That helps address it? I don't know if that helps address it, because I agree with you, and having the businesses' locations is very important. It's just on that wall, and I'm thinking in my mind, when you...when you walk by there, you...you see it on the street when you drive by very briefly, but it's to the side. you see it on the street when you drive by very briefly, but it's to the side. It's not in front of you. And when you're on the front of a building or in a kiosk, like you have at the other end of the street, it's a lot more eye-catching. It's kind of like putting a sign around on the side of the building. Does that make sense?
Depends on what you want to accomplish. If you want to accomplish artwork, it's one thing. If you want to accomplish something that's gonna embody the community that's in the area, that's a different thing. And I'm looking at a solution to both problems. And I think another solution to not seeing where the restrooms are is that the town can put a sign three or four different places, directing people to the restrooms. I don't think that's really an issue. I mean, you could put a sign right out in front saying that the restrooms are here, or put one down at the end of the street saying there's restrooms up here. So I mean, that's not a problem.
Isn't there a restroom sign written for the building now, up on the post?
Yeah, there is.
Does it work?
No. I appreciate...
I mean, it was brought up that, but part of the reason is to determine...people can determine that the restrooms are there, but there's already signs that the restrooms are there.
Yeah, they're...yeah.
So you can redo the signs or do them in a more attractive way.
Yeah. I appreciate...I appreciate what you're saying. I...I don't know. I've been here quite a few years, and I've had a lot of people walk right by it and having a clue where it is. So I thought, and I look across the street, I look at the mural on the side of the Red Rooster. And that looked good for quite a few years. I mean, I've been here 12 years. It was here before I was here. I don't know how long before I was here. So...
We're fine.
It's up to you.
No, that's fine.
You'll do whatever you want us to do.
No, thank you very much.
Just put a lot of effort into it.
Yeah. I don't think anybody else has any questions. I think we've got a plea picture. Thank you, Marilyn. We appreciate you coming to us tonight.
Thank you very much for having me and letting me put my two cents within. I hope it helped.
Okay. Anybody from the public want to address this issue? No? No, Phil? All right. With that, I'll close the floor to the public, and we'll talk to each commissioner and go down the line and see what your thoughts are.
I really like it. I mean, I think it's an excellent competition. And I think the idea of actually having something that you can see, that tells you where the restrooms are, is a good idea. I don't think that clogging up this wall face with any additional verbiage is going to help it, because it's way over on the side.
Yeah.
You don't see it to begin with. What you need is something you can see from Main Street. So I think, first of all, this is a really nice composition, very well done, nicely framed, good balance of color. I think it'll be an excellent addition. And I think, like I said, I think the idea of...because when I was doing my investigation, I was like, "Oh, this is where the restrooms are." I mean, I think the gentleman is absolutely correct. There's nothing that currently exists that tells you that's where the restrooms are. I think the one that says restroom, the public restroom, it's a little big. But the graphics is nice. There's really not anything else going on back there, and it tells the story. So I think what we've got here is an excellent presentation. I think it would really be nice as it is, as presented.
Thank you. Commissioner Dowling?
I have to agree. I like it. In my line of work, I can tell you that just this last week, we had a call for service there, and there were some police officers who didn't know it existed either. So I think there is a need for a sign. I think that would be a good, great place for it, and I think it promotes the city well, so I like it.
Commissioner Matt?
I like it. I didn't know there was any restrooms down in this area either. I've only been here a short time, but I really like the...I think it's a great idea.
Mr. Dowling?
I think it's presented well. I think it works well with the...what's already here. I do understand the concern about adding some more information to it. But at this point, it's, you know, it's sort of baked into that cake already, and I think that there is good reason to do that in other areas, almost even sort of a sign with a "you are here" type setup. But to do that and try and integrate it into that, I do understand what you're saying about the scale of it and the eye-level situation. I think that there's already discussions ongoing for other signage that I think we could tie that in with. As this is right now, I think it's good to go as it is.
Further comment?
I have no further comment.
Okay. Vice Chairman?
I'm all for artwork. I love the murals. So I think this is great. My artistic side wants, we are the gateway to the Verde River. I'd love to see, instead of a pathway, because I love the vineyard and the shape of the heart and the backdrop, I'd love to see the river come down instead of a pathway, and...because that tan bleeds right into the sidewalk, so that blue would sharpen it up and highlight the river. That's a huge part of our community. And Commissioner Hart mentioned the size of the lettering for the public restroom. And that's...that is, you know, I'm looking across, we've got the business assistant lettering that's very prominent. And these...the lettering here is almost double that size. And I would prefer to see that shrunk down, so it's not as large. And see a little bit more, you know, you've got a little call-out with some decorations to decorate that a little bit more, because otherwise, it's gonna be...you're gonna see that from the road, and it's gonna be public restroom. It's gonna drown out everything else. Add some color and a few more design to it, I think would, you know, highlight it even better and make it blend in a little bit better.
I'm very happy with the president. The...I've been here 14 years, this time six years previously in the 80s. Until this presentation, I really didn't ever pay attention there was any restrooms in that building. I wouldn't have found them. So I think it's a great idea to do that. I like the Vice Chairman's idea a little bit. If something could be incorporated into that, into that front sign, maybe, so it isn't... You know, it's still very readable and very noticeable from the...that's what you want to do. You want to catch the people on Main Street, and that's where the...that's where you want that directory. And also, I think Casey's been talking about, you know, doing some more signage, wayfinding signage and directory downtown, and that would be better put out near the walk, the front walk, so people walking up and down and so forth would be good. So I'm good to go on this, and if we can... At this point, I'll entertain a motion, Vice Chairman.
I move that we approve DR-18-011 with the stipulations, one, the project be developed in conformance with the requests submitted July 17, 2018. Two, that the signage/mural be reviewed by the Historical Preservation Commission for artwork being located on a city-owned building located in Old Town Historic District. Three, that the signage/mural receive City Council approval for artwork being located on a city-owned building. And four, all signage shall be submitted and approved by a separate permit.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Dow, second Vice Chairman's motion. Jackie, we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Hart?
Aye.
Commissioner Dow?
Aye.
Commissioner Norwood?
Nay.
Commissioner Dowling?
Aye.
Commissioner Masters?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Wesson?
Aye.
Chairman Williams?
Aye. Motion is carried, six to one. Okay. Moving on to the next item, discussion items. We have none listed to discuss tonight.
Maybe we should mention about a special meeting on September 10.
Okay, September 10, we will be having a special meeting for, I think everybody's probably aware of that at this point, to have the presentation for the Starbucks...
And Dairy Queen.
And the Dairy Queen projects.
Here, we're gonna do it here?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Bye. Good luck.
And the...well, those will be just the two items on that agenda for that. And then about September 17, our regular meeting, we will...
Correct.
We have some items for that meeting as well.
We will have the regular meeting.
All right. So we have some proposed items on that. Okay, that sounds good. Any other informational reports and updates we need to be aware of? Okay. Make sure we have enough space in here to hold it. Have the fire marshal come. The meeting on the 10th to control the crowd. We might have a good audience that night. Very good. With that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move that we adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We all say aye. All righty.